Special exception permit to operate a country inn is provided for in 170-306D. The property is located at 1954 North Pose Road and is 446 acres in size. The property is named Agricultural. Since the preliminary review of this application, the applicants have worked with the adjoining property owners and have amended their request. The applicant proposes to host farm-to-table dinners with no more than six dinner events per year with not more than 12 guests at each event. Each dinner event will take place on a weekend whereby the guests would arrive approximately 5:00 p.m. on Friday and depart by approximately 5:00 p.m. on Sunday. They are proposing to provide overnight accommodations for their guests with the existing two cottages and one cabin on the property. Also proposed is to host no more than two lectures, luncheons for up to 30 people, and for those to take place only on a Saturday or Sunday, no earlier than 10:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m. VDOT stated that the existing entrance will function as a low-volume commercial entrance, and based on their field observations, stopping site distance at the entrance is adequate. The Health Department commented they would need a Virginia Department of Health permit for a tourist establishment. The two proposed receptions per year will require a separate annual VDH temporary food permit. The pool will also be required to meet all applicable VDH regulations regarding the operation and posting of water test results. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 18th in which they recommended approval of this application with staff conditions by a vote of seven to zero. An applicant and their attorney are present for any questions.
Ms. Summers, would you repeat the condition that you just stated? I apologize, I was logging in.
The staff conditions that are contained in the staff report?
Oh, it's a, it's a, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
That includes what the Planning Commission approved?
That's correct.
Okay.
I guess there, in my district, I can tell you, I think this probably went, if we had a template on how to apply for something, I think you all did an excellent job when getting your, I know North Pose Road is a very together group of people, and they did a lot to question what you were trying to do. And I think you did an excellent job with the coffee morning that I was able to go to. You allowed them to speak and ask questions and were very willing to adjust some of what you were trying to do. So as far as how people get an exception approved, I, I think you guys did a really nice job, and I just want to thank you for working with everyone closely. So I really honestly don't have any questions. I think they've done a very nice job. I think the Planning Commission did a very good job, so I don't have anything else to add.
Madam Chair, should we open the public hearing?
Oh, that might be a good idea.
Well, we don't have clear procedures, and we may want to do that at some point in time, and the ordinance has some. The applicant may want to present anything that they want the board to understand. Then you would hear from the public through the public hearing, close the public hearing, discuss, consider, and possibly make a decision.
I think they did so good, I don't see any public. Okay, I'm officially opening the public here. Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Does anybody wish to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom? I didn't think about that.
We do have people on Zoom. I do not see any hands raised at the moment. I haven't asked for that. But there are directions on the screen on how to raise your hand if you're so inclined.
Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak with regards to this applicant?
I see no raised hands.
All right. I would say the public hearing portion of this is closed, and open it up to my peers if they have any questions.
Ms. Summers or Mr. Curry, maybe you could just help me. So this is a, this is a country inn application, is that correct? Why is that within our zoning ordinance the fit here? Would there be, would there be any other provision in our zoning ordinance under which what they're proposing to do would fit, or is that, is that it? Field events or, or some other alternative approach? I'm just curious because, I mean, this sounds like dinners. I guess there is overnight lodging associated with the dinners, so maybe that's, that's the hook. I just want to understand why we're going this route. Is that it?
I would ask their attorney to address why they've applied for what they applied for. We didn't apply for them.
Fair enough. That's fine.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Supervisors. My name is Taylor Odom, and I'm representing the applicant on their special exception permit. The reason why we applied under the country inn section of the ordinance is because the country inn specifies, I believe it was overnight lodging and events with no more than 30 people?
Forty.
Forty people, with no more than 40 people, and because this is a combination of an event as well as out, as well as overnight lodging. Michelle and I, after reviewing the code, thought that was the best subsection under which to apply the, the application. And the, the composition of the overnight lodging will be for the dinner guests, so there'd be 12 dinner guests at each event, and then they have space for 14 people for accommodation overnight. So then that would leave two more beds for any of the workers that would be serving the dinner, so they wouldn't have to drive back to DC at night or Northern Virginia where they're coming from. And then, as well as with the lunch lectures, how we call them lunches slash lectures, there would be no more than 30 attendees at each of those, but some of those might be coming from out of state, perhaps out of the country, and they're allowing up to 14 people who attend those lunches or lectures to be able to stay overnight, so they're not having to go back late at night. So those are the components of the overnight lodging.
Okay. And I, I looked at the property, and the applicants were very kind to show us around. Lucky you to have such a beautiful place. What I, what I felt driving in there really was, I always think about these types of applications in terms of land buffer, Madam Chair, and, I mean, I certainly had the impression that with the size of the property and this, what seems like relatively light use of the property, in fact, I'm, I'm still surprised not, not to encourage the applicant to, to increase the intensity of use, but we're talking about six, six events per year plus a couple of luncheons, which doesn't seem like much at all given the size of the property. So I can't imagine if we, if we don't support this type of application and such a light use with that kind of land buffer, I don't know what we would ever approve in, on a property like this if somebody wanted to engage in some commercial use of it. So I fully support the application, and I, I'd be interested in hearing from Mr. Fraser, perhaps, from a planning commission standpoint, if there's anything that we need to know that's not apparent from the documents.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's a, it's a very limited use of a large property, as you mentioned, so I, I had no problem with it. There were some arguments that kind of went too far in different directions, but I think everything came back to where it needed to be.
Okay. I do want to ask one clarifying question relative to the recommended conditions from the Planning Commission and then also in the staff report. You mentioned just now that you are offering a limitation of no more than 12 guests per dinner event, and then I believe I heard you say no more than 14 guests for the reception events. I don't see that 14 in the recommended, it may be in your application, but I don't see it in the recommended conditions, and I want to make sure, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't matter, if that is what you're desiring to make sure those conditions are included in what the board considers.
Yes, Mr. Curry, that was the intention of having that included in the, in the permit language.
Where was the 14?
So no more than two reception events per year with no more than 30 guests at each such, at such events.
Right.
And there's no more than 14 overnight guests per reception event.
And that's not in the staff report, as I see here?
Right.
Uh-huh. Right, so I think that makes sense, because again, we're going back to a, a country inn type use, which contemplates overnight guests, so if there's overnight use associated with these lectures, luncheons, then let's state it explicitly, I agree. 12 guests per dinner event, so it'd be an additional bullet point under the conditions, is that correct?
Or an extension of that fourth bullet.
Okay.
However you.
Okay.
So it seems like, and this goes to the question that I had, Madam Chairman, regarding this application, because the recommendation, the recommended conditions say more than 12, no more than 12 overnight guests, which is a very general statement, but now we're hearing no more than 14 for reception events. Is that correct?
I'm not quite sure why it doesn't just say 14, and we don't care whether they're the cook or the people attending.
I think that was just the, that was just the intention of how to break it up, because we, the intention was to have some of the workers who are attending the events, certainly have the opportunity to stay, and so we wanted at least two.
Who would be a guest?
And then, well, they would also be guests, and then there'd be attendees of the, of the dinner, eating the dinner would be 12 of that, so that's why I think that 14, that number 14.
Speaking from Ms. Summers' from an enforcement perspective, I think it would be cleanest that if somebody had a concern, it's the number of people actually sleeping over and paying for the right to, and I guess is that why you, you determined that the, the work wouldn't be paying to spend the night, which you can invite anybody to spend the night in your buildings?
That was not a consideration of that, no, but paying for the worker was not a consideration.
Then it might be cleanest if it just said no more than 14 overnight guests.
Just modify the third bullet point under the conditions, it's easy enough.
And I would, I would think it would be wise to add there no more than 14 overnight guests in conjunction with any dinner or reception event.
That's fine.
Yep. And my only question is, and I should remember this, and if it's okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to address the applicant.
Sure.
Remind me, what is your total, I mean, if, if you had a full house, and I think you said you'd have your, your whole family there, I mean, what maximum accommodations that you actually have on the property?
Comfortably 14.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's, it's driven by that. Okay. Perfect. Yeah, so I think, Ms. Smith, let's make that change, the way you phrased it. Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve a special exception permit application 20-09-01 with the reasonable conditions as amended by Ms. Smith to modify the language regarding overnight guests to reflect 14 overnight guests for dinner or reception events, if that language is clear enough, Mr. Curry.
I'm with me.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
I have a question. Is there a time limit to it? Because when we had met with the neighbors, you know, we didn't know it was like three, if this approval was three years or?
The Planning Commission didn't recommend a time limit.
Okay.
And, as I understand, and the board didn't apply a time limit.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
No.
Nice of you to ask. All right, moving.
Thanks, Taylor, good to see you.
Thank you. Second, number two, public hearing, amendment to the zoning ordinance 170-45 floodplain overlay district to comply with FEMA requirements.
Yes, I brought this to your attention a long time ago when FEMA approached us and let us know that the plans were going to be updated, and it usually is about an eight-month process, but for us, a missed advertisement by FEMA and then COVID got in the way, and so our process dragged out quite a bit longer than some of our neighbors. All that said, in order for our citizens to benefit from the National Flood Insurance Program, we must have a floodplain ordinance, and ours is included within our zoning ordinance, like many are, and it's an overlay district. So there are restrictions on what can be done within the flood zone, zones, and the ordinance identifies what those restrictions are. FEMA and the state have model ordinance language, which the Board of Supervisors adopted previously in earlier forms, and that model ordinance language has changed some over the few years since our floodplain ordinance was last modified. So the main part that changes when a new flood map comes out is it, is our ordinance will reference the latest and greatest flood maps, and so that is incorporated into this document. But the other small wording changes are alignment with the current federal regulations, federal model and state model, and those are all identified in the ordinance that are attached with underlined italics and highlight or a strike through where items are removed. I did include a link to the updated flood maps and flood insurance study in board docs, and those have been available in their current form for well over a year now for review by citizens. With that said, as with the prior public hearing, this public hearing was advertised in the newspaper as required for zoning ordinance changes, and it's gone through the Planning Commission, and so it's appropriate for the board to consider the public's input at this level.
All right, so I'll open the public comment period.
Public hearing.
Public hearing period. And I don't see anyone in here that wants to speak to this issue. Anyone on Zoom that is interested in speaking, please follow the guidelines as far as raising
Seeing none actually got to work.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, okay. Not seeing any. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and open for board consideration.
Madam Chair, my only question was, pretty significant technical changes to this ordinance. Mr. Curry, could you just educate us? Is this, did you get new FEMA model language that was adopted?
Yes, new, well, new state model floodplain ordinance language, and then actually sent our draft ordinance to the state to review.
Wow.
And I have a whole checklist chart that they go through.
Yeah, it's pretty complex, and I just wanted to know sort of the legislative history of how we, how we got to this point, because when I reviewed it, and. I thought you'd become a lawyer overnight or something.
No.
Okay.
So this precisely incorporates the model ordinance changes. Some are definitions, some are minor changes like how accessory structures are handled in the floodplain, and those are required to be in NFIP. Nobody, no locality must participate in NFIP, but it is a benefit to our citizens so they can get flood insurance for the property. So if the board is of mind to adopt this ordinance amendment, the ordinance amendment is included in the packet in ordinance form with several, whereas paragraphs identifying the process and up to and including considerations of the Planning Commission, and all of the changes are enumerated.
Mr. Fraser, any issues from your side on the Planning Commission?
We open it for public comment and close it about as fast as this one's going to be.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the amended floodplain overlay district ordinance as presented, which includes all the changes, additions, and deletions shown in the, the appended draft.
I'll second it.
The motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Because this is, ordinance will require a roll call vote.
Roll call. All right, Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you. All right, and the last one in the public hearing is a public hearing for amendment to Rappahannock County Code, Chapter 22, Fire Companies and Rescue Squads. Mr. Curry, do you want to explain the change?
I will try, and I'll, Mr. Goff can support if necessary. Your current Chapter 2 of the county ordinance includes provisions to enable the volunteer fire companies to act on our behalf and gain certain benefits extending from us, such as sovereign immunity, and it also identifies the fire and rescue levy that the board applied in some year way, a long time ago, 1998 maybe?
1998.
Yeah, and so over time, since the board took that action, the Code of Virginia has changed a little bit. Back in 98, fire and rescue were handled together in the same section of the Code of Virginia. Since that time, fire and rescue are now handled in two different chapters, 27.1 and 32.1 or something like that. Yeah, which is, 27 and 32.1. And so while our ordinance remains still effective, and it is based on the Code of Virginia that was in place at the time and is legal, it makes sense to catch up to what the Code of Virginia states now and more clearly identify the distinction in what the Code of Virginia allows us to do relative to fire and EMS. And so now they call it EMS rather than rescue in the Code of Virginia. And so what this draft code does, which Mr. Goff put together, and I, we worked together a little bit to massage the wording, it recognizes the new, the latest fire and rescue services agreement. It identifies that the county may levy this tax on the entire county as the district for fire and for EMS services, and it recognizes your authority to take certain actions using that, those dollars, to include providing for fire and EMS. And it goes into great detail as to how the money could be invested for EMS as we're moving towards this, these decisions, on whether it would be for a county EMS or potentially for, through to the volunteer companies, and it makes that clear in the ordinance. So the Code of Virginia enables us to do those things, and we have been doing them under the auspices of our 1998 ordinance, but this now much more clearly lays it out and tracks the code language to connect the dots, if you will, for citizens so they understand our authorities. Reasonable?
Yes, it's, it's the enabling legislation that will let you hire and pay, pay EMS people. Without it, I think I explained in an earlier opinion, without making this ordinance change, we wouldn't legally be able to authorize the fire company's chiefs to hire people, or you couldn't create an agency of government to do it. So we just need this simple step, it's a wording step, but some of that's necessary to enable you all to hire paid EMS.
And I'll just add that while it is an enabling step, it is not the last step, and so the board is, remains in control of the process, and basically, let me just backtrack to the right part of this sentence. Establishing an EMS agency as a department of government pursuant to Code of Virginia, contracting with or providing for the provision of EMS services by any EMS services agency pursuant to the Code of Virginia, you may contract with and secure the services of any individual corporation, organization, volunteer EMS service agency, or individual emergency services provider, as may be required by resolution of the Board of Supervisors. And so this now, you've been enabled by the Code of Virginia to adopt such an ordinance, and by adopting such an ordinance, this board and a future board would be enabled to pass a resolution to actually move forward on that authorization.
All right, so I have to now open the public hearing.
I should note, this public hearing was advertised pursuant to Code of Virginia 15.21427. Not being a zoning ordinance, it doesn't go to the Planning Commission, it's a slightly different code section, but that was done in the paper, and notices were placed in the paper.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this amendment? Okay, no hands here. Anyone in Zoom wish to speak with regards to this amendment? Please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody. Mr. Curry, are you?
No, I'm not seeing any. The fact that you don't have 100 volunteer fire and rescue people here indicates to me that.
I agree.
Indicates something.
It indicates something.
Mr. Curry, is it fair to say that this, that we close the public hearing?
I need to, I have it.
I'm sorry.
I am now going to close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
Is it fair to say that this just, this is sort of baseline ordinance adjustment to help us in the future as we move toward some form of degree of paid EMS?
Yes, and on top of that, it, it clearly references the most recent fire and rescue services agreement, and then parenthetically, future agreements.
Am I correct, there are no inherent obligations here to do anything?
Correct, it, it enables you to take action in the future.
I'm fine with it.
Any other discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
And as with the last, there is, the ordinance is in the, in the, with materials in ordinance form and with voting matrix, it will require a motion second to adopt the ordinance, and that's a roll call vote.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, I've motioned out tonight. I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt this amended amendment to Rappahannock County Code, Chapter 22, Fire Companies and Rescue Squads ordinance as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion and a second, further discussion? If not, we'll do the roll call vote. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you. This moves us into public comment, the evening session. Anyone wishing to speak, please let us know where you're from, try to keep it five minutes or less, and raise your hand if you're interested.
Hi, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. Happy New Year, first of all. I was very pleased with the beginnings of the conversation with the Black Kettle Commons presentation. I think it would be a huge boon to the county, the concept of like the common good. The associate with Mr. Akri made a very important point, and that is, the way the property was, part of it is in the county, and that has some interesting topography, which is wetlands and things of that, which would make that particular thing not exactly advantageous by itself. However, in the concept that Mr. Akri and his group have developed with a total picture, it makes the whole thing really a joy, that we could have something like that in the county. And I think this is a beginning. They've done a whole lot of work. I went to their website, and part of it, you're going to, you're going to see the plat, and the part that's along Route 21, there's, there's a huge buffer of green rain, everything. Then the other parts are along the other two roads lead into the town of Little Washington. So, and then the point that they brought up about the lighting, they also addressed that, that they had actually understood that part and were willing to work with the people to do that downward direct lighting, so that would have less of an impact to the whole thing. My thing is, you know, Sperryville has been bursting with growth and, and just a wonderful atmosphere and community, and it would be just a real pleasure to be able to see something like that, that the town of Little Washington could have in addition to Patrick, who's blessed. bless his heart, is doing things. I mean, people used to complain about him, but it's like, who else was going to buy those empty buildings that he's bought and refurbished and made into a wonderful, wonderful place for a lot of us to enjoy and out of town? Plus, what John McCarthy said one time, bless the tourists, because they come, they spend their money, and they go home, so there's less of an impact on our community. So I'm really hoping that they go forward with this and that everyone works together with a can-do kind of an attitude. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Anyone else? All right, we can close.
Oh, Zoom, maybe.
Oh, that's a good point, keep forgetting about Zoom. Anybody on Zoom would like to speak, public comment? Please raise your hand, Zoom way.
As noted previously, the screen identifies different ways that people can raise their hand based on the platform that they're using. We have five people on Zoom.
All right, I'm not seeing any hand raised. Go forward and close public comment, and unless there's something else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I would like to ask one question relative to adjournment, before you adjourn, and relative to the public hearings that will be coming up at your next meeting, and the location of your next meetings. Courthouse seemed to work pretty well tonight, although we may come up against some public hearings that may draw a bigger crowd, and I'm not sure what they may be. The rezoning is one, when it eventually gets here, which won't be in February. The May amendments will be here in February, and that, I'm not sure what kind of crowd that will pull, probably not too big. But I will need to know well in advance if there is a mind of the board to hold public hearings at one of the larger spaces, high school auditorium, elementary school gym, so that I can find out what's available, and then we have to advertise those public hearings for the right location. So if I were to, if I had to do that, I'd need to really know now whether there is an interest to have me advertise public hearings at a location other than the courthouse for the February meeting.
I think items of this nature should be at the discretion of the chair.
And, yeah, so that, that'd be a way the board could very easily empower the chair to make that decision in the timing that is necessary. I just certainly don't want to overstep, you know, the authority that you're granting me.
I'm fine having it be part of my responsibility as long as I know how soon you need to know, how far in advance you need to know.
Well, if it's a zoning meeting that has to be advertised two weeks successively, and the second one can't be any more than 21 days from the public hearing, or closer than five days, you got to break out the calendar, and sometimes we have to put the ad in the paper tomorrow to be in this Thursday's paper in order to make it, and I haven't done that calculus right now.
Okay. Are there any current state restrictions on how many people can be in a room? I guess that's the other piece of it.
Executive Order 72 includes all of the language relative to how many people can be in particular spaces and masks, face covering, and the portion of that executive order that applies to how many people can be in different settings, provision of local government is exempt.
Okay.
And so, no. But local government is not exempt from the face covering section.
Yeah, so we'll just have to stay on top of what's in the hopper in terms of public hearings and just try to guess the best we can, and err on the side of caution, I don't know what else we can do.
Yeah, heretofore, I haven't seen where those, the numbers allowed changed based on the size of the room for gatherings, but it could be set on capacity, and in that sort of scenario, a high school auditorium may work much better because you could fit a number of people, which is why the board invested in that facility to allow many people there and still be distanced.
Any other comment?
In regards to that particular question? No, I don't have anything about that question.
But it appears she has something else.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
It actually touches on something earlier that I asked of Mr. Akri, which is an update on the Washington Post Office. It's now been, I think, 16 months since the post office was closed in the town of Washington, and it's meant, you know, a lot of volume in Sperryville, especially around the holidays. I know it creates traffic or compounds traffic challenges. There's parking challenges, and, you know, it's still only limited capacity within the Postal Service building, so often people are waiting out in the elements to pick up their packages of mail. I am a big believer that sometimes it's better to be hands-off, because if you start to push something, you may create a monster, but I think in this instance, the monster's already been created.
Could we, I think we're, we're already planning on having at least the mayor and perhaps Mr. Bennett, who serves as the town council attorney, at our next meeting, could we at least ask them if they could bring in whoever could answer our questions about what's going on in timing? I agree with Ms. Smith, just, it got started, but it seems to be going nowhere fast.
It's a mud hole. It's an engineering nightmare, is what happened.
Right, but I think if we're already going to have them in here, let's kill two birds with one stone.
I think that would be a really good way forward, and, you know, like I said, I don't want to press the issue, I know it's within the town, but it is creating issues within the county, throughout the county.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that one hill has also, has also been passed with a lot of the parcels.
Very much a county issue.
So.
There's no groundwork going on, no matter what, no matter what.
Timing is probably good. Obviously, you can't force somebody to come to your meeting, but if you're requesting them to come to your meeting for the Black Kettle Commons project that they really want to come talk to you about, and then you also are talking about this, then they already be here.
It has to be the right people to actually answer questions, and so I don't know if it's a developer or who, but.
I would beg to differ, Mr. Curry, I think as a Board of Supervisors, we can compel people at some times to come to this meeting.
Maybe, but I'm not sure the town council's that part of that group.
I don't know.
You can try.
Can compel constitutional officers, I don't know why we couldn't compel the town council.
I think we should start with a friendly invitation.
That's where I was, thank you.
It helps that they attend.
It wasn't very friendly what they pulled back in June about our memorial.
Well, you know, let's take the high road and hope it works out.
Anything else before we adjourn? Anyone want to make that motion?
Let's move.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.